Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President.
Okay. Now, if it was gonna be a little bit more week, I'm gonna ask each one of y'all for a hundred dollars.
Uh-oh.
I'm turning to a Baptist preacher now. But again...
You know where I work, ain't I, man?
But again, I want to thank everyone for coming out today. I know the mayor has already presented a proposal from the executive branch, but also it's very important that the legislative branch put some things in place also as it relates to the coronavirus. And today, it's very important that we have all the stakeholders here today to help us with this situation, this crisis. It's gonna be very important that all hands are on deck to work through this problem here. And I know the federal government has already set down guidelines and also the state. But today, it's gonna be very important to address the needs here in the city of Selma, to provide opportunities and information for our citizens in some in Dallas County. I have also written to each radio station in the area asking for a public service announcement. So if you would like to go on the airwaves and do a public service announcement as it relates to the services that you are providing during this crisis here, you may. Also, I'd like to recognize some of my county council members here. Councilman Janet LaShore, who represents Ward Six. Councilwoman Janie Thomas, who represents Ward Seven, and who's also on the Public Safety Committee. And Councilwoman Youngblood, who's on the Public Safety Committee. Thank you, Councilman Randolph, and also Councilman Randolph, who represents Ward Five. Some of the arrangements that the council will be taking during this crisis is to have a soft closure at the hospital. That's gonna be up to the mayor, according to operational hours. We're looking at, you know, talking with the mayor to see what offices would be questionable during this time. Also, the council is moving forward with suspension or rental of all public buildings. All the events that we have in our public buildings, we're moving forward with the suspension of all the events. In addition to that, it would be a cancellation of our March 23rd work session and March 24th council meeting. So the next council meeting, along with the work session, will be council. And the council, in addition to that, would appropriate funding for two code enforcement officers. With all the trash around the city of Selma, it's gonna be very important that we appropriate great funding for two part-time code enforcement officers. And in addition to that, we would be doing a contract with someone to clean up all the public buildings. This is here in all the public buildings. And last but not least, like I mentioned to you before, that we would be doing public service announcements on all of the radio entities. If you have, if you would like to go to the radio station to also disseminate the information. Once again, thank you for coming out. This is gonna be a very important meeting to put together a plan to see what we can do. But one of the most important things in addressing this deadly virus is information. Because I feel with quality information, you can make a qualitative decision. And that's what we're here to do today. And again, thank all the stakeholders who are here today. If you would come forward, just give us information, and we can move forward from there. First, we have found reason to meet in the center. Mr. David McCormick, if you please come forward. And also anyone that you may have with you, please come forward.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening. Thank y'all very much for coming. Just a couple of updates. I have my two expert infection prevention folks. They've been following this very closely. Following this very closely. They've been in touch with the state and federal CDC. So we're doing everything we can in our facility to make sure we stay current with all the latest information on this. We have today that, and under the federal recommendations of what we're doing, we're gonna restrict access to the hospital. We will only be able to have people come through the front main entrance or through the emergency room. Once they do come in, we will have a questionnaire following the CDC guidelines as to what their situation is. Do they have a cough? Have they been out, exposed to anyone? Do they have a fever? We will limit visitors to the hospital, or one visitor per patient at a time. And they'll go through the little registration process. They can go visit the patient. When they leave, another patient, another visitor can come and see that patient. But we're not gonna allow a bunch of folks to come in and congregate. We're not allowing them to be in the hospital. They're allowed to stay outside the hospital. In the emergency room, we'll have the same process going on. Patients that come in that feel like they may have been exposed or they're exhibiting some of the symptoms, we will question them there. And if they meet the CDC criteria, which means they have a fever, they've been possibly exposed, or they have been in an area where there is a virus, and they have a shortness of breath, then we will take further steps on them. We're not a testing site. We don't have any testing sites thus far in Dallas County. The Lab Corps organization is trying to work that out. Supposedly, they will be on one day. But right now, we have no one testing. Now, we are able to collect samples. They collect samples at the health department, various physician offices. And at our hospital, again, we won't even test and take a sample unless you meet the criteria of what this, what the disease has. We've gotta be very careful that we don't wanna, to make it a crisis, even though it is a crisis. But right now, we wanna make sure if everybody starts coming and running into the hospital, then we're not gonna be able to take care of the real sick patients. And that's what we have to do there. So we're asking people to just stay home. If they're concerned, they're not feeling good, they stay home. Social distancing, I think that's the appropriate word now, is what works. Fortunately, the virus does have a short lifespan. So if you feel bad, you stay home. If you don't wanna go get caught, catch it, then you stay home. But don't just, everybody start running out to all the nurse rooms and all the urgent care stations and all physician offices, because that's not gonna do any good. We'll be overwhelmed. We do not have facilities to handle that at this time. Also, our cafeteria will be closed. And our gift shop will be closed. We're closing all of our waiting areas, because we're just trying to follow the federal guidelines to keep congregations from milling around and if they do have it, infecting someone else. So, y'all have any to add?
What are their names?
Jennifer Talbert.
Jennifer Talbert. Talbert?
Jackie Mulcher.
Jackie Mulcher.
Mulcher.
Has he had any contact from the federal government or from the state department of health to give you any guidance or coordination with you locally?
Yes, they are sending out, almost hourly, information. Most of it's pretty set. It's, the only updates we're getting are how many people are infected across the country. But all the information's pretty set. We have protocols in place that we deal with infectious disease every day. And the flu has been here for a while. It's been here my whole life, but it's certainly been here over this year for a while. So we deal with those things on an ongoing basis. And we have protocols in place where we, you know, have the protection that our staff have to wear when they go in and take care of patients, to make sure that we're not infecting someone else or catching ourselves. Right now, we wanna make sure our staff and our patients are not exposed. And the best way to not be exposed, stay home. Unless you come to a very important meeting like this, then of course you need to be here. But overall, if you feel like you have any symptoms, it's not severe for you, then you stay home. But if you do get in a situation where it is severe, then you certainly need to come.
The president and the vice president, another update, we'll give you on our own. We rolled out the 15 days to halt. And they're saying that they're gonna try these prescriptions and approaches every 15 days instead of setting a deadline.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was not, I did not get to see that interview, but that does make sense. And I think that's why a lot of buildings and a lot of businesses, schools certainly, are being closed for the 15-day cycle, just to see how that goes.
So what I mean by saying with the cafeteria?
Yes, yes, yes. We're gonna close until we see what happens. And we're getting guided from, like you said, the feds and the state daily. And right now, we're following their guidelines. Yes, sir.
I have horrible respiratory problems. Let's yell, "How about all of them again?"
Yeah.
Again. How do you, what do you advise patients who normally, this time, particularly spring, some suffer from respiratory illness? What do you advise? They just contact their family physician first?
Yeah, well, first they should stay home. Okay? And then do what they normally do. What did you do last year in this type of situation?
Call my doctor.
Yeah, okay. So that's, you know, and then they'll advise you on what you need to do. But yeah, this is, that's a routine situation you're probably used to doing that. I did see one blog that said that pine pollen will kill it. So we're hoping that's true. No, I'm kidding, okay? Pine, that pollen is so thick in the area, it's gonna cause a few more problems than the coronavirus. But thank y'all very much for coming and showing your interest. The key is just don't panic, don't everybody freak out. But stay inside if you're not feeling good. Don't risk going out and infecting anyone else. And especially the people that are vulnerable, the elderly, the people that do have respiratory issues. You know, just don't get around. It's better to be safe than sorry. This will pass, so they're sitting there for everything. We get through this crisis and be back to normal. So thank y'all.
I've heard that the alcohol and bourbon, is that true?
I'm gonna test that tonight, yes.
I do need to address this. You know, I have seen, especially the Facebook, and that is the right end of the devil.
Yes.
A lot of times I get on myself, because I'm just bad.
You're addicted, yes.
But anyway, you know, I'm saying, oh, it's just the flu, no more, no less. And so X number of people die of the flu every year. And well, that's like saying, you know, so what's the big deal about strokes? Because so many people die of heart attacks every year.
Yeah.
You know, you address that.
Yes, and we do wanna prevent it. It is a tight flu. Flu is a virus similar to that. But the key is to not let it get out handy. It is more contagious than the normal flu. And people in certain compromised situations, it is more deadly. So we wanna just try not to let it spread.
And we don't have a tanned COVID-19.
No.
Like tanned flu.
Not yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Excellent job.
Thank you. Okay, we do have two reps from the health department. Any questions that you may have for them, you can ask after the meeting. Next, we have Dr. Park Two.
Thank you. I'm Park Two, and I'm an internist here in town. I'd like to mirror what Mr. McCormick had to say about being wise. If you have a cold, if you have the flu, and you can stay home, let's do it, okay? Very reasonable question. I got out of the pollen, I cleaned out a closet, I got the runny nose, I got a cough. That's not the time to go to the emergency room. It's not necessarily the time to come to your physician. This is all new for us all. Okay, yes, we do have the flu, but we all, you know, recognize that this is a little bit different. Some of the insurance companies are doing some things. Or they don't wanna talk about it a whole lot, because I don't know all the details. But I got an update, actually, while Mr. McCormick was speaking, about some things that various insurance companies are doing that'll make this a little bit more palatable. I can say this much, the clinical saying this much, they're gonna make it easier for patients to call their doctors and get some advice and get some help. Testing, I think, will shortly be more available. I'd love to tell you when, but I think everybody's real interested in seeing that happen, okay? Now, to Ms. Youngblood's point, yes, this is a big deal, and we don't want anybody to get it. But for the individual person that's in good health, may well not be the biggest deal, okay? On the other hand, we have a lot of people that we consider very, very valuable that might be at risk. And so us not getting it helps them not get it. So it is worthwhile, so these preventive measures are worthwhile. Now, you'll notice that we're all learning, okay? So I just put my hand on a microphone that somebody else had touched. Well, we're learning, okay? And so, well, that's okay. I'm not pointing blame here, but the point is, is that we do need to be careful. We may need to rethink a few things. I don't know if y'all can see the big bottle of Germex. That's what $175 worth of Germex right there. Thank you. Yeah, so in any case, it is worthwhile to rethink a few things. I think the health department and the CDC and so forth, everybody would agree, when you walk in the house, use some Germex, wash your hands. I would argue that washing your hands is even better than Germex. But wash your hands, wash your hands as much as you can possibly do it. If your hands get dry, I do all the time, and that's probably that little update there. Wash your hands as much as you can. If your hands get too dry, use lotion, okay? But let's do the hand washing. The illness is spread by droplets. I think we've all heard that. It's also apparently spread by phomites, which is a medical term for stuff, like microphones. Your government, your city council, everybody that I've run into is real interested in seeing how all this goes. I would expect, as somebody said, 15 days. I would expect there to be ongoing things. I have a phone call that I'm gonna be involved in with Alabama Department of Public Health later this evening. I would venture to say that there may be some change that comes from that, okay? I don't know what it might be. If I knew what they were gonna say, then they wouldn't need to say it, I guess, right? So, each group of doctors is trying to do some things to help people make a good decision about whether or not they come in. I can't speak to what other offices are doing, because I've only heard secondhand. We appreciate everybody being patient with us today. We're trying to check temperatures as people walk in the door. And obviously, somebody that has a high temperature, that raises our levels of concerns, and it ought to probably raise other people's levels of concern. If you have a high fever, when we say high fever, we mean 100.5. 99.5 is perfectly reasonable for somebody that's sitting out in the sun or somebody that's jogging or hot, feels hot. So a true infection suggesting temperature, usually the illness when it has symptoms, it has a runny nose and cough, muscle aches and pains are the typical, what's been reported. Not that I've seen any of it, but those are the typically reported things. And I would say if you have a question, now, we're a hard grouping culture in Selma. We like to go to work. We don't wanna miss work. We don't wanna miss church yesterday. We don't want to miss those things. This might be the time to go ahead and miss it. Find something good that you can do around the house, something productive, something useful at home, and be patient with ourselves, be patient with our employees, be patient with our employers, and working all of this out. Any questions? Yes, sir.
You have private practice?
Yes, sir.
So what happens in a situation where, in a radio building, you know, you have a lot of patients in a radio building, and is there a way for you to enforce the social distancing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Now, it's an imperfect system, and we're all working that out. But as it stands right now, I would, you know, and again, I can't speak for other physicians. But we're making an effort to screen people before they come in. And if they fail a screening, or if they suggest that maybe they have an illness, then we take one tact. Only do we bring them into the waiting room if they do not have, if they don't seem like they failed the screening. Failed is a strong word, but I think you're getting what I mean.
What if I don't have a thermometer?
We have thermometers.
But I mean, if I'm home?
If you, well, you know, that's a really good question. CDC has answered that. If you think you have a fever, you have a fever. My suggestion would be, okay, my suggestion would be to make an effort to get a thermometer if you've got a real concern. But that's perfectly valid. CDC has answered that question. If you think you have a fever, then you have a fever. Now, I don't like that. I think that's probably gonna make some people think that they're sick when they're not. But if it makes some people that think they're sick stay at home, I'm kinda for it, okay? Now, it's, a small percentage of people will still need help anyway. They get sick. I would say if you are vomiting, if you are short of breath, if you become dehydrated, if you get into an extreme situation, you may still have some need. And I would say call your physician would be a great place to start failing that. There may be some time to seek some help, even though you are sick. Probably a better way to say that, but, you know, if you're really sick, we really wanna help you, okay? Whether you've got the virus or not. Any other questions? Okay, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. There were a lot of elders that argued in respect, just say, if they, if they happen to become ill, recommend a succumbant.
Physician, yes, ma'am.
So that's why I wanted to know, because a lot of them have problems with their breathing, and everything that I said to them. And I just wanted to know if you say they not, you didn't have to put a room to talk to them.
Right, right. So, you know, there's so many permutations to that. So somebody might have this illness, and somebody else might have that illness, and so forth and so on. Just because somebody has a runny nose doesn't mean that they need extreme measures. And I think we've all run into that. We've all had days where we kind of wish we didn't have to go to work and we could stay home. Those folks, please stay home. Somebody that's in an extreme situation, well, it is an extreme situation, okay? And so sometimes it can be hard to tell. And sometimes it can be upsetting to have to deal with that. And we don't want you to have to go through that alone, okay? And so the insurances are doing some things to try to make that a little bit easier for us. I think every physician I know of is real interested in helping folks. And I know that the hospital is too. And that would be the perfect example of one of those times where it might be worthwhile to seek some extra help, okay? And it'd be nice if, you know, it could happen during normal business hours too, you know, which is nice, but not an absolute requirement. So, in any case, I haven't spent a bunch of time on it today. I've gotten a lot of value out of calling, out of looking at the CDC's website. And so let me encourage you to do that. And I've, you know, they have special positions, lines. I've called them a bunch of times. They've been, they've tried to be very, very helpful. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Chilton, this is for you and the hospital and the health department people. We've heard and read about some places having the dry, the rush, and do we have anything about the possibility for that coming to a close near us? I just, because we, I know I have been asked, and we're probably going to be asked as we send more of that. So I just wanna get that out there to the medical community and ask that question. So we don't know of that.
Yeah, you know, I don't have anything that I would put a stake in. But I've heard rumors of there being places where people have been tested here, there, and y'know. And I think there's a lot of interest, and I think there will be a lot of do. Now, I don't know when the do will begin, but I have, I came in before 4:45. I feel like I've made a movement toward that since, in the last 30 minutes. That clock's not right, is it? Okay, in the last 30 minutes.
And one more question being, is how, had the blood show, you've been at home watching TV today. I saw where this man, I don't know if it was the surgeon general or who it was, but said that they gave you first, is it vaccine today?
Test, just a test.
Chest vaccine?
It's gonna take a year to go over the board.
Oh, okay, so...
It was developed in Massachusetts, and it was shipped to Seattle's research facility to be tested on humans. And that's one of numerous that are tested on...
So whenever that's out, that's gonna, people are gonna be asking about when we're gonna be getting that and what. So, so that's not, that's not gonna be, certainly not this year, so...
No, just in general, when and if those vaccines become available, they will first be available for those that are at the highest risk and those that have the most likelihood of having a serious result from it. And so if and when those come out, which will not be in the next 15 days. I don't think you can get a pizza that quick. But in any case, that's, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of a long ways off. So our best strategy at this point is to try to help us make sure that we don't overstretch what our, what our healthcare can provide. And I think our healthcare system has some ability to flex, but we could conceivably, you know, not want to, if we could help it. And not, it'd be nice if we can avoid that.
We know what these answers really gonna be, but we are gonna be asked these questions.
Sure.
You know, by people here on...
Sure.
They're going, and, you know, you're gonna be asked them too.
Sure. Well, I'm asking them myself. And, but, and so, the reason I can't say it 100% is the person that passed me a message along is not in a position of power and control. But he pointed out that, like most vaccines, it will be in limited supply. So I wouldn't look for us to, you know, right now, we've got a, and over the next 15 days is as good a length of time as any. We've got to buckle down and make sure we use our resources appropriately. So... Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Let me recognize Councilwoman Angela Benjamin, who just walked in. Next, we have Mr. Chad Kirk, of the Edmondite Misses, CEO, President, Mr. Everything.
Is it clean?
And there's some clinics inside, just my office, and that general.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give you a couple of brief updates, what's going on in the missions. First of all, we are open for business. We are not closed. Some general comments that I really wanna make, unfortunately, I'm glad that Facebook is running, Sam, because a lot of the folks that we deal with at least have access to that and should be hearing this information. So I'm thankful that at least it's getting out somewhere. Unfortunately, in the room, we don't have those that are most highly affected by what is, I guess, is a matter of time, and certainly to hit here in Dallas County and Selma, the poor. And so there are some efforts being made by, I believe, and I suppose Aubrey will probably speak about it, by the utility companies and the water company, suspending payments. And although some might find this to be of quick benefit, it is absolutely not a benefit for those poor to do and avail themselves of that. I would ask that if there is a client or someone out there that does have a disconnect notice, do not ignore it. Come to the mission as you normally would to try to get you back on track. If, in fact, you let these bills pile up, until June 1st, you're gonna be that much deeper in the hole, and then your disconnect's gonna come in the heat of the summer. So I think that it's interesting that this is happening now because it raises a very real problem 12 months out of the year for the poor. Sanitation, heat, cooling, the whole gamut. So I think this is a great opportunity for us as a city to look about what are the long-term solutions to these problems, not just during a crisis situation. So I think there is a lot more to be done here. I would ask those that can not get behind on their bills, if you come to the missions for assistance, continue to come. Let us work with Alabama Power. Let us work with the gas company. Let us work with the water company. Do not let these disconnect notices go unheeded. It is not an extra $30 where you're making decisions, I know already, about medication, or even getting your nails done, or your hair did, or whatever it may be. Do not take that extra money and believe that it's free money. Because come June 1st, there's going to be a severe problem. And I can tell you, if you wait, the missions will run out of money and will not be able to assist everyone. So fair warning. Get in line now. Stay up with your bills. Stay up with what you need to do. Be responsible. We learned today that most people, if they hit a $400 crisis in their life, they would go bankrupt today. Most of our folks do not even have that. They're living on $11,000 a year. So we have some serious problems here, but important problems that I think... So we have some serious problems here, but important problems that I think as a city we need to address when this is over and figure out how are we gonna deal with not just a crisis situation where we come together, but talk about the state of our city and poverty and how are we gonna deal with the folks that are in need 12 months, 365 days, a year, 24 hours a day? So that's, that's on that. So please, send folks to us, do not let them get behind on their bills. It's not extra money in their pocket. You know, the payment's gonna come to the money come June 1st or June 15th or whatever your payday is in June when all of this expires and the urgency of what's going on fades into the distance. So Catholic Social Ministries is open, 8:30 to 4:30. If anybody wants to come in, we are practicing safe practices, so only three clients at a time will be allowed in the waiting room and then vetted through. Our Bosco operation is open 20, is open seven days a week as has been practiced. We are also beginning our breakfast bags tomorrow from 8 to 9:30. And anyone that needs a breakfast can have one through spring break and into the future. It'll be simple, cereal, granola bars, juice, milk, whatever the case may be, fruit. But that'll be available from 8 to 9:30 at Bosco. Lunch will be served and dinner will be served. As it is now, if you have no place to go, you can come in and get your food and sit down, four at a table, moving folks in and out. You can also get a plate to go. So for those folks that are homeless or don't have home, they can at least sit down and eat in a dignified space. Those that have a home can get their plates and take them as they see fit. Our Meals of Hope program, so we, we serve about 1,000 of those a day, folks, so it's not a small number coming in and going out. We deliver 310 in-home meals called Meals of Hope. So we will be doing wellness checks on those 310 folks that we deal with on a daily basis to make sure that they are well, they will have their food, and we will ensure that if they're taking their medication, just reinforce that they're taking their medication and again using sanitizing agents if they, if they, just as a reminder before they eat, to wash their vegetables, whatever the case may be, but to wash their hands. The Bosco, the community center is delayed opening until middle of April, just out of, out of caution. The YMCA's are closing very quickly and so we figured why infect a brand new space? So we're gonna keep that closed until mid-May. Our after-school programs have shuttered until the beginning of April to be determined when we start those back up. Again, just following along with some of the school, school guidelines and when and if it hits Dallas County. As far as I know, and I don't know if the county health knows, do we have any confirmed cases in Dallas County yet? So, so we're still, we're still keeping it at bay. Maybe that's our prayer. But, so I don't know. Is there anything else, Joe?
Programming is canceled.
Yeah, the programming is canceled, but the feeding programs and the Catholic Social Ministries, the aid and utility assistance and that is still on track. And like I said, the food is available. So now we'll have breakfast, lunch, and dinner instead of just lunch and dinner. And, yes?
I just want to thank you for finding a way to serve the, the basic needs, the necessities, the three meals a day. That is just awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Our folks deserve it, so we gotta make sure we take care of them.
Yes, and you deserve that, that mention.
Well, thank you.
I mean, just give it to you.
And just so, and we are doing all the right precautions at Bosco, the distancing, the sanitizing. If anybody would like a copy of our release that we put out, that might be helpful, just so that you have that. And also if anybody is inquiring about a public space and what we're doing at Bosco to ensure safety, we have that for you as well. And Joe can hand those out if anybody would like them.
And the meals and then the, the well checks with the meals, the pills, that, that is awesome.
Yeah, we'll be, and, and if folks, I'll say if somebody does become ill or if you know of somebody that can't get out to get food, have them contact Catholic Social Ministries and we'll ensure that something gets there and get them, get them on the way. If folks need to be in and aren't free to be about, just give us a call so that we can help take care of whatever that need may be.
I mean, I just want to say that's really awesome.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Do you have any of this on your website?
Uh, yes.
All of ours is currently on Facebook.
Everyone that you sell on, on Facebook. Okay, and what about the breakfast?
Yes.
For, for kids who are in school, because I understand Montgomery is beginning to provide breakfast for some of these school kids. Are you, are you set up to handle kids that are going to be in school?
That's what it's for. In fact, what we've decided to do because we realize some parents will probably not be able to go to school or go to work, that we will, and like I said, it'll be a very simple breakfast, a grab and go. Like I said, cereal with milk or a piece of fruit, something, basically to get them to lunchtime when we open at 11:30. So it's just, and so anybody that, that needs a breakfast bag can come and get a breakfast bag. We're not restricting it. And we're starting tomorrow, even though folks were wondering if we would be doing it because it's spring break. And so the schools typically wouldn't be offering anything during a spring break. And so we, we're starting ours tomorrow and we'll be going for the foreseeable future.
And lastly, I know you talked about the social distancing. Is that going to slow down like it is a lot? You know what I mean? Are you gonna create a line if necessary?
Sure, yeah. And what we have found already is that many folks are coming in and getting a meal for them and their mother or grandmother or whatever. So folks are actually already beginning the process of taking those meals out and taking them home. So at this point, at lunchtime, it was very, very seamless, but we're offering a space for those that don't have a home. At least they can, they can be there in the space. Well, I'm up here. I mean, Cory, anybody else, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Cory, hurry.
They're just staring at me now. I'm on set. Thanks.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Harvey Carter and Mr. Wayne Barnum, my phone, and next Ms. Cheryl Smith.
I guess you're trying to get a hold of a line.
This man keeps the lights on. It's folks better than me that has the lights on.
So thank them when you see them. Cory, thank you for the invitation today. Thank you all for coming out. My name is Alfred Carter with Alabama Power and just wanted to give you a few updates on kind of where, where we are. We've been actively monitoring the COVID-19 virus and we've implemented plans to make sure that we ensure continuity of services while keeping our employees safe and, and keeping service to the general public. Like many of the businesses you've heard probably on the news, we are practicing social distancing. And so some of our folks are, are working from home and in alternate location, but they stand ready to get the light back on if, if, if need be. As a matter of fact, I apologize because that's some of our folks trying to call me right now. So let me decline that. So that don't mess up anything and I'll call them back in just a minute. But like Chad said, as, as he referenced, Alabama Power has a lot of services that they offer to folks who find themselves in need. Should you know of anyone or anyone come to you, please have them call, contact Alabama Power. They can use our website at alabamipower.com or our 800 number, which is 1-800-245-2244. And we will work through whatever issues that you have there. Outside of that, just know that we got our crews and our folks on standby, ready to respond should the need arise. I'm not sure if Wayne has been able to hear. Wayne? Okay. He just said he was gardening a little bit. He couldn't hear you. My phone was probably getting a whole bunch of information. Wayne, Cory had just, just kind of given an update. Do you have any update that you want to share from?
Yeah, and I hope y'all can hear me. Cory, ladies and gentlemen, I have talked to the State Commerce Department, they are self, containment, today's a host of their people, I mean self-worrying, most of their people are working from home, it will be for three weeks. But I'm in constant contact with the American Department of Defense, which is us, and if we got any issues that I can get directly to them anytime. The Center for Commerce is self-worrying, some states, but we are covering the world which is having a borderline, but we have a goal on it. So anybody needs us, we knock on the door and it's a phone number, very innocent, you know, we have LBS. Trying to slow down some of the traffic we have that's come off the street. So we got full staff, full cops, we'll do that as long as we can. I personally am very high risk, because I'm not there today, I'm sitting in the morning, the time to die, daddy, and whether I've been double or double before, so I'm trying to be very careful, bad working, I am bad at office, but I'm trying to keep myself, some states, I'm fucking pushing the key. Cory, if there's a concern, in all we know, this is where we're dating, lots of them have their own concept, there's a deal, play on and leave. And that is the kind of work they're working. They don't necessarily share all that work, but they're all working on the work. Of course, they've got their state, they keep state in this position every four weeks there. They're getting high officers that discuss that there is a field in front of Congress now dealing with leave and it's dangerous companies that have the rest of the time early for you. And it hasn't been finalized yet, but they've laid out, come to the table, subsidized. So as that gets finalized, we can make sure everybody gets a copy of that. And basically that's what's happening right now. We did call off our annual meeting that was scheduled for this week. We made that decision Saturday morning, really far, city, in their office, in the building. So we had to cancel that, I canceled a couple of things. We have a leadership class getting to do a tour, all the industries, we had to cancel that. And, you know, we just tried to do what the governor asked us to do, ours, like in ours ground, but that moved, that's a boss, which is definitely not. And a couple of things we had to cancel. We, we are scheduled to do an hour affair with the city, but I think that's it down now. So it puts a place that we gotta do before we get to the actual hiring date. And I don't know how to get, we're still trying to work that out. But other than that, that's basically what's happening. We'll be on our way, trying to get feedback, we'll be back.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. He's calling for you now, Cheryl.
And thank you, City of Selma, for this very informative meeting. I think it's very important to keep our quality of life sustainable here and so thank y'all very much for this meeting. Just to piggyback off what Wayne said, we are, we are staffed at the Center for Commerce and at the Chamber of Commerce there to help and address any needs that come before us. I have spent the day making phone calls to our area attractions, which are basically closed. They've all had, this is spring break time and unfortunately, a busy time for them that has, all tours have been canceled. And they have addressed that they will be closed through the 1st of April and then follow whatever guidelines they need to follow. I spoke to our area hotels this afternoon and quite frankly, they're doing, they've had some cancellations, but they're staying busy because of our IP shutdown. So the ones that are being affected are, are the ones in tourism with our attractions and our tour guides, basically what I've discovered in there. Again, our retail seems to be busy because we do have empty shelves and I still want to encourage everyone to be sure and shop Selma first, keep our local economy booming as much as possible because we don't know what the future holds and we want to keep our community viable.
What are some of the attractions, the shelves are shut down?
National Voting Rights Museum, Sturgess Hall Museum, Brown Chapel, Tabernacle Baptist Church, that have all been given tours. The Selma Interpretive Center remains open until further notice. Our Odepo Museum is also there. She's there, available if someone wants to come in and tour as well.
What about the pilgrimage? What's going on with that?
Okay, pilgrimage. They met this morning and they have canceled it and it is rescheduled for April the 24th and 25th. And events like the Low Country Bowl has also been rescheduled to April the 30th. So a lot of those updates are going on in our calendar as well.
You said there's a shutdown of IP, is that related to the coronavirus?
No, 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 that's their annual, where they come in and close everything down for maintenance. It's a maintenance, maintenance time. No, don't, please don't get that confused. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Good evening, everyone. We've done at the police department, we want to make sure, and we expressed to officers that when they do transport, they make sure that they clean their seats and their hands and everything. And also, I know when we get off of work, we want to go home and kiss our wives and family, but the main thing is make sure you wash your face and your hands before you do that. They say you don't have to take a shower, but make sure you wash your face because you've been out and exposed. So right now, that's pretty much it for us, what we have going on with the police department.
Do you have any issues with, if you're, if you have to make, or your officers have to make an arrest or there's some sort of an incident, is there anything special in your training that you do to handle a situation like this with people that you arrest and how do you house them?
Well, if we don't know, like I said, we make sure that they are cleaning their equipment and their seats. So if something is wrong with them, you know, everything will be sanitized.
So what happens if you have a person that's showing symptoms of coronavirus that you arrested?
Well, what we do then, we will call care ambulance and they will come and do an inspection on them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know we just had a jubilee and a lot of y'all was out there dealing with the crowds and things like that. Is, is there anything put on the book that they get tested, they start shooting at?
What we did, I got the call before jubilee started and what I did, I reached out to care ambulance and they advised me that lab portal would do the testing, so, but they have to have a doctor's order. And I was also advised that Baptist in Montgomery would go and get checked there.
Any other questions for Chief?
Just one last question. Have we, or any federal agencies been in touch with the, with the, with your office about any directives or any concerns or strategies in the event that things get worse?
Not so here, not spoken of.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief Crawford. Chief, Mike?
Basically, I want to talk with you about some measures that we went through and did at the fire department. I put out a memo of the day on infection prevention. One of the things that everybody is aware and familiar with the recent outbreak in the spread of the COVID-19, I urge everybody and including everybody here to, to go online, if you, if you make access to www.cdc.gov for the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, so that you may be able to be fully aware of the steps that you can take to prevent the illness, what to do if you're sick, and tips on how to keep your community as well as your schools and your work areas safe. And I have expressed it to our departments, it's imperative for our department to be proactive as well as we're going through this, this incident. Some of the tips and things that I've put into effect there at the department is keeping our apparatus inside the truck haul with the doors closed, limiting access to the fire station from outside visitors, and we're going to utilize one main entrance and exit for visitors who may stop by at the station. I requested that they do not enter the restaurant for dining purposes, but they utilize the delivery service or drive-through places for that. We have increased daily cleaning of the fire station, locking down door nods, handrails, fire poles. Commonly, you touch surfaces in areas of high traffic with a disinfectant, clean agent each morning and afternoon. We already in the fire department utilize our PPE. I still put that on the list, utilize a proper PPE when they're in contact with patients and the general public during fire call responses. As you know, the fire department does not have an EMS department in our department, so EMS division in our department. So we rely a lot on care ambulance to do a lot of the EMS calls. I have put out masks and things like that that are on our fire trucks, so if we do have a case come from 911 that has applied this COVID situation or any kind of biological hazard for that matter, that they actually utilize a face mask and utilize a face mask on the patient that they're dealing with, so it kind of cuts down on the virus situation Part of the PPE is our gear that we wear as well as the rubber gloves that we wear as well. Some of you may have seen that, like on EMS, but we do have the capabilities on our fire truck to be able to deal with that. I've asked if they wash their hands thoroughly after any patient contact as well as proper cleaning PPE if they've been exposed to any biological hazard, whether it be COVID-19 or any other illness. I've also notified, asked them to notify the battalion chief commander, shift commander if any cleaning products or PPE or other supply needs need to be taken care of during the shift, if supplies go down. I've all, you know, have told them, always keep in mind that we all must work together to prevent cross-contamination of the coronavirus and for that matter, any kind of illness. I know it's very imperative for the fire department that if it does hit us or if it does hit the police department, you know, this is going to hurt pretty bad. As you all know, that this COVID-19, they're, you know, putting us in isolation for two weeks, you know, if we come in contact with a person that has that. So as you all know, it's a manfire situation in the fire department as it is, it's really going to hurt. What we had in place then, we would have to rely on our mutual aid with our other volunteer departments if a situation like that hits the other department. Try to put this policy in place for our department and our men and women that do work for us so that we can possibly not have this situation happen in our department.
Does your training with hazardous materials cover any of the scenarios for pandemic?
Well, I do have quite a few individuals, including myself, who have went through classes of that nature and we're very aware of what types they'd be and how to deal with situations like that, how to deal with mass situations with the health department and the hospitals as well, so we're very familiar with that.
And the most worst case scenario, do you have any kind of a relationship or strategic plan with the National Guard or other law enforcement agencies that could come and help you other than volunteer and fire departments?
As far as that, I'm sure the police department has had training as well with situations like that, so, you know, we've had training to deal with certain situations that we may run into. The problem is, is if somebody gets infected, then, you know, it's going to hurt our department. So we want to do everything that we can to go through the preventive steps and try to prevent that from coming through the department.
Thank you, chief. Our EMA director had to leave, but once again, let me thank everyone for coming out today. I felt like this was very informative and also helpful. Are there council members who would like to make any comments at this time? Councilman Shaw? One question on the public buildings, something about the public buildings are going to be closed. Can you clarify that? Can anybody clarify? Do you see a public building being closed?
I know a lot now, but the mayor is...
They were just sort of canceled.
In a rental event, in our public building.
I think the police said that the people who have events scheduled within this month, I think it was a month, maybe a 60-day period?
60-day period, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they need to get with the public building where they would have the event and reschedule them for after 60 days.
Yeah, the mayor's office sent that out, sent a letter out, I think it was today, as a matter of fact.
I have a copy of it.
I was going to say, I have a copy of it if you want.
If the mayor's office is having a function or concern in the city, then I'll be in from somewhere else. Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Youngblood?
So I'm assuming we'll be getting the policy that the council would be sending from this. And I do want to say that, you know, we're just knowing for people to inject and, listen, I have to admit, I printed a rumor that I didn't know was rumor because it looked real official, it looked like it came from San Francisco saying drink water every fifteen minutes. Which it certainly doesn't hurt to drink water, but anyway, you guys can hear a lot of things and a lot of rumors and stuff and flows, you know, next thing you know.
You do want to be hydrated, so.
Yes, you do want to be hydrated, drinking water certainly doesn't hurt. And, you know, a few other things from time to time, but it doesn't hurt for your constitution.
And I think you make a good point. There's a lot of information that's going out, some of it's true, some of it's real, some of it's not. So don't just believe it unless it really comes from official source such as the city or the department health or CDC.
Right, and, you know, always, if in doubt, call your doctor or your doctor's office. I know in my wonderful doctor's office, they always have someone who can give you good information. Where's Dr. Chilton? They always have people that can give you good information.
What are the recommendations that the mayor had made, was setting aside, on the radio show, he said half a million, in his letter today, he said a million dollars to deal with any eventual, any emergencies that may or may not arrive or any eventualities that have occurred. Has the council decided when they're going to do that or not?
Well, we look forward to the mayor coming for counsel to explain, you know, his wish for the money and explaining to us, you know, what he's looking at, the purpose of the fund.
It's us. And I would love to hear from the medical professionals, if the hospital, the health department, if there are any needs from the medical community in the city that needs to help with, we look forward to hearing about it. So, yeah, if we have any particular needs, we're always supportive.
We look forward to the mayor coming for counsel with this request and explaining, you know, the need for the request. Councilwoman Thomas, any closing remarks?
Oh, just that, I just want to say that we all want to take care of our elders and our major chairman, make sure they're all right, and that's important. That's all. Any closing remarks?
Thank you. Councilwoman President Protem, Councilwoman.
Thank you, President Protem. I'm happy to look at a call with the governor's office, the state board of education, EMA superintendent, and some more stakeholders involved in Dallas, Dallas County, the congressman office involved there. At that time, the congressman was on the floor fighting for this bill that had been included in this meeting, fighting for this area to make sure that it was included in the bill, and it went from the night until the morning. Since Selma has declared the city as a state of emergency, we are now eligible for the funding process. And so the congressman's office, we need to make sure that this funding, should we apply for it and receive it through the process, the bill that I've been signing has been sent. She needs to make sure it gets to the right areas. And so government and stakeholders need to make sure that our plan matches the framework by which this funding is available. We will have a follow-up call on tomorrow with those stakeholders. Testing concerning that part, that councilwoman Youngblood said that children, I thought you were children. I have to ask you, I've got other questions about that part. So I'm assuming that part of this funding process is that we get a nearby testing center, and actually talking about that tomorrow on the show, is, is, they have a center nearby because people walk back to Miami. They have an investment or they have an expenditure, maybe that for, and a private entity is doing it. So they apply and they have certified, and maybe that for or someone else can apply and become certified if these funds come down to make sure that they will be paid for the, whatever the supply and the goodness are that you're supposed to have.
So what do you saw, um, you declared emergency?
Um, in the mayor's. The mayor, yeah. In the letter, I wasn't letting him out this day or day before. Yeah, so in the last three days, the mayor did. It was based on recommendations that we gave out immediately, and I'm glad he took those recommendations, actually, because nothing was moving and shaking in Selma County. So we put out some recommendations, the mayor took it, put it in a letter and called it a state of emergency. Good thing for us because now we can be part of a funding process.
Well, I know Montgomery, I know the mayor declared emergency.
Yeah, yeah. That's a smart move. That's a smart move. And so we need to make sure that Selma County plant can be a part of that funding framework. It is very, very important with the things that we're talking about here, the things that we need in this area concerning this virus, this virus and things that are happening. We're losing dollars on this end and losing dollars on that.
You want to go to the first room, you have a question?
I don't know, I don't know, I mean, I'll do, I'll meet you later.
Come on.
Who questions?
Okay, Councilman Reddell?
Do you have to finish?
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
You have to finish. So testing, we know that there are more cases that have been...
Listen up.
And granted, so we know that there are more cases that have been reported and this testing is closer to our constituents, they are likely to go get tested. We need to make sure people are not shamed about going to get tested because I tell them all the time, I put it on Facebook, just many people comment on, hey, if I have a sample, I'm going to get tested and you should too. And so there needs to not be a stigma around going to get the test and they need to know what those samples are. Somebody said it already, the sample's already, and you know what those are. And so testing, testing, testing is important. We are going to be surprised at our numbers as soon as these tests come out.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilman Reddell. And also to echo Councilwoman Benjamin, once you declare a state of emergency, then that's you put yourself in line for federal rocks. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you everyone.
Thank you, guys, for doing this.